Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Municipal Authority Meeting. It's April 24th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We're in the Council Chambers of Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight is a special meeting that has been called. We will not have our invocation or flex loop. And so let's have roll call, please.
Selby.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Inmark.
Here.
Right, at this time, we have a presentation, and so I will turn that over to our City Manager, Mrs. Kretschmar. First, David, oh, go ahead.
Um, did you want us to go down there?
Yes, I want you to, and I'm going to come take a picture, because Conrad's not here.
First of all, I want to give a big thank you to David Inmark for stepping in for Ward Four after Eric resigned. You have been great support to us, and we really appreciate your time, that you've been here, and we really hate to see you go.
I appreciate it.
This is just a small token of our appreciation, but we wish you the best in your future endeavors, and hope that you'll come back and see us again.
Will do.
Thank you, David.
All right, at this time, we'll have a presentation of proposed utility rate study from Ryan Smith.
All right, good evening, Council. It's good to be back in the great city of Yukon. We do have a PowerPoint that will be pulled up briefly. Just before we get started, I want to reintroduce myself. My name's Cole Niblet. I'm our Oklahoma Water Team Leader for Garber. I've got several members of the team with me here today. Ryan Smith, who's going to be leading a lot of this presentation as well, and then Michael Nguyen, a project manager for Garber out of our local Oklahoma office. So, okay, there we go. So, like the item suggests, we're here to talk about our proposed rate study. The draft report has been delivered, reviewed by staff, and worked through some comments there. So what we're doing tonight, excuse me, is presenting this to you as a discussion item only. No official adoption tonight, just presenting information for you to digest, start thinking about this before we come back for an official adoption later on. All right, so actually, before I kind of set the stage for the primary tasks we went through in this study, I do want to touch on the most important part of this. I want to thank the Yukon staff. Tammy, Mitch, Doug, Jason, Arnold, they put up with us through many requests, many emails, and they did an outstanding job bending over backwards to get us the information we need to put together a solid study. So, super impressed with the city staff, and just wanted to give a kudos there. We put them through a lot, so it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, I want to just give you a quick overview, excuse me, of the primary tasks we went through in this rate study. And so, we also have tried to craft this presentation so that it's an appropriate amount of detail. I hope it doesn't seem like information overload, but we do want to present an adequate level of information for you to make informed decisions about your utility. So, if it starts getting dense, bear with us, there's a lot of information to go through here, but we're trying to condense this down to the main points for you tonight. So with that, we went through five main tasks in this study that we'll summarize tonight. Milestone one was really a revenue sufficiency analysis, which essentially is just a forecast of revenue needs. Just like setting up your budget at home, we do our best to review historical data and use that to project what the utilities' expenses and revenue requirements will be over the planning horizon. Second, in addition to those ongoing expenses that you might have, just through recurring expenses, water purchase, things of that nature, we wanted to go through different capital planning scenarios with the staff and make sure we're planning for adequate funds to be set aside for those large capital projects, just like your wastewater plant project that's going through right now. Third, with those first two milestones complete, then we sit down and actually put together a rate design and a cost of service model for you to adopt and then move forward. Fourth, we work in an impact fee development evaluation associated with that, so separate from the base utility rates for water, wastewater sanitation, we did do an evaluation of various impact fees that we think would be prudent for the city to consider moving forward for new connections that might be impactful to the system. And then finally, we get to where we are tonight. We are presenting our draft report and presentation and our findings for you. So really, through that five-step process, I wanted to kind of summarize at the crux of this what we are going through, and really, like I mentioned, at the base of this, this is an exercise that is similar to you setting up your budget at home, is really what we're trying to do. It's a balancing act between our gross revenues, money coming into the city through those rate sales, and gross revenue requirements, expenses, debt that the city may need to take on, capital funding, and then prudent cash reserves. So at the crux of this, this is essentially a plan for the city to maintain a healthy budget for the water, wastewater, and sanitation systems moving forward. A few key examples that you'll hear us touch on, first, the revenue requirements, that top bold bullet there. These are some of the major expenses that build into this financial forecast. Obviously, operating expenses, wholesale water purchase from OKC, you guys have a take-or-pay contract where there's a base fee for the 2 million gallons per day that that contract covers at a base rate, and then above that, there's an elevated rate for flows over that. So, accounting for that, as well as a five-year capital improvement plan and a vehicle replacement plan, that's where we sit down with the staff, Arnold and his team, and think about what kind of replacements, what kind of renewals do we need to plan for. Covenant compliance with a potential SRF loan, looking at that for the wastewater treatment plant potentially, and so building that into the projection to make sure you are SRF compliant should you need to take out that SRF loan. And then finally, cash reserve targets that are needed for any utility, but setting reasonable budgets and projections for those. And then finally, in that revenue forecast, what we're trying to identify is, one, evaluate what your existing revenue streams will be and how we can project that moving forward, and then build into this plan how we think we can make reasonable rate adjustments moving forward. And then, at the heart of this, we really want to develop a rate design that's reasonable, defendable, and equitable amongst your rate payers. So that's really at the top of our priority list when we talk about this. So with that, we're going to start diving into some of the details here, and I'm going to invite Mr. Ryan Smith to come up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ryan Smith. I have been doing this type of work for over 15 years. I've worked for over 100 utilities, and I am also the Vice Chair of the AWWA Rates and Finance Committee. And what you're seeing on your screen, this is really kind of the results of the financial forecast. This is our gross revenue requirements that are projected over the five-year forecast window. They include our operating expenses, our general fund transfers, our purchases of wholesale water. Wholesale water, one thing to note, is that we did evaluate the existing agreement you have with Oklahoma City, and we looked at the projected rates that Oklahoma City has already adopted. To give you a little background, Oklahoma City has adopted rates for the next three years that are adjusting on an annual basis of 5.5% per year. So we wanted to make sure that we accounted for that, and kind of like Cole mentioned, right now at Oklahoma City, for all water that you receive under that 2 million gallons per day threshold, you pay approximately $2.78 per thousand gallon. However, going above that capacity reservation level, your costs jump substantially to $7.85. So recognizing that, as we developed the forecast and developed the rates, we wanted to build in a structure that, you know, recognized our actual cost of providing water and recognized what can we do to incentivize people to stay within their allotment per account. We also developed two additional items that are on here that you may not have heard about before at the city. The first one was a renewal and replacement fund, a dedicated capital funding mechanism. That's shown as the dark gray bar, and that's really an allowance to set aside, almost to put money into savings to allow for capital reinvestment in the system. And generally, in most utilities, capital reinvestment, that's the largest driver of rate increases. Additionally, we did look at developing our capital improvement plan. Now, one of the largest drivers for your capital improvement plan is the wastewater treatment plan upgrade project. We noted that you've done really, really well with receiving grant monies to fund that project, $5.3 million. However, we did note that we needed to potentially issue additional debt to fund the remainder of that project. What we've estimated in the study is to secure an SRF, which is a federally backed loan program. It's really done in almost every state, and so we've recognized in that, in the forecast, to fund the remainder of the wastewater treatment plan upgrade project. Now, that program, I would highly recommend you all try to move forward with securing a loan through that program, because it's got very favorable terms. First, they capitalize interest during construction, so you make no payments until after construction is complete. The interest rates are subsidized on the federal level, so right now, we've assumed 2%, and honestly, I've seen them down in Florida, less than half a percent still this year. Now, that is adding a little bit of debt service upon the project being completed out in fiscal year '26, and then full amortization starting really in fiscal year 2027. And then additionally, one of our largest cost items, too, is our transfers to the general fund. So we've left, one thing to note is, we have left those transfers flat over the forecast period, so we have not recognized any increases above the amounts being transferred during fiscal year 2024. Now to talk about your existing revenue stream, and that's what you're seeing on your screen here, with the blue boxes representing our water revenue and the gray boxes representing our wastewater revenue. Now, a couple things to note when we looked at the water revenue stream. You have really strong fixed revenue recovery, so your revenue stream is very stable. Right now, you're generating over 61% of your gross water rate revenues from your two fixed charges, which includes the base charge and the OKC subsidy charge. However, one of the things we were asked to evaluate is the use of the OKC subsidy. Does it match the service that's being provided to our customers? So we did look at that, and we're going to talk about what our recommendations are for that going forward in just a second. Then additionally, on the wastewater side, you also have really strong fixed revenue recovery at 39%. Generally, for most utilities, I'd probably see this around 30% fixed revenue recovery, 70% variable, so you look really good there. However, we did note the change from our seasonal rates going from summer to winter. Winter, you have two additional volumetric tiers, and when we looked at how much additional revenue was being generated from that revision from one season to the next, it was less than 1% per year. So to provide some administrative efficiencies for staff, we did, we are making a recommendation to go away from the seasonal rates and go to a single structure, and we'll talk about how we're going to do that in just a second. The next slide that I'm presenting to you, this is an evaluation that we do for most rate design analyses, where we look at how many bill, where are our customers utilizing water? And your system looks, it looks very, very normal for a primarily residential system, and that's what you're seeing here. Now, a couple things to note. If you recall, we have a 2,000-gallon minimum use provision on water and a 4,000-gallon minimum use provision on wastewater. So with a customer, a residential household, their minimum bill or their base charge assumes that gives them allotment of up to 2,000 gallons of water, 4,000 gallons of wastewater. And when we think about this chart, those bars being the bills rendered, and then the line being the cumulative bills rendered by that point in time, really by the time we get to 4,000 gallons, about 60% of our total residential class is already using at 4,000 gallons or less. And really, by the time we get out to 8,000 gallons, 85% of our customers, their bills have been rendered by that point. So you only have about 15% of your residential accounts that are using above 8,000 gallons a month. This is pretty consistent, and honestly, that puts your level of service for an equivalent residential connection or an ERC, right at 250 gallons a day. That's like spot on with kind of what you would typically see for instantaneous demand relationships for residential accounts. And really, when we, let me actually jump, however, when we look at how are those customers, what kind of average revenue are those customers paying, we then looked at what's the application that's currently having based on your existing rate structure, and that's what you're seeing on your screen now. This really illustrates the average revenue that's collected per thousand gallons at each increment of usage on a monthly basis, the blue bars being water and the red bars being wastewater. And if you think about, if you look at the volatility there, really in between 1,000 gallons, you know, you take your base charge, your OKC subsidy, and we express it on a cost per thousand gallons, those customers right now are paying the highest cost. Now, that's normal, honestly, now, but is it normal to this level? Maybe this one could be a little adjusted to kind of bring that down a little bit. Now, on the wastewater side, because your base charge is $10 and they get up to 4,000 gallons, there's a lot of volatility in that short window, and really, when we looked at the wastewater bills, you're talking about 60% of the bills being rendered where they could pay $10 on average, down to $2.50 on average. So as we looked at designing rates, we said, this is something we want to consider, and we want to work to adjust going forward. The next thing we did is we also looked at the direct revenue that was collected from the Oklahoma City subsidy charge. Now, this is the $20 charge that's assessed to all accounts, and what you're seeing on your screen here, the first bar is really our water sales broken up in between the residential class and the commercial class. Commercial using about 29% of all the water delivered in Oklahoma City. However, when we looked at what revenue is being collected to kind of offset that cost from the OKC subsidy, we noticed a variance. Approximately 8% of the revenue is collected from the OKC subsidy is associated with the commercial class. So that kind of pushed us in that direction to say, well, hey, maybe we need to take this cost, the cost of purchasing wholesale water, and move it from a fixed charge to a variable charge. And if you recall, one thing to note, right, is that these customers, I'll go to the next. So, a couple of our goals associated with the design also of water and wastewater rates. We utilized your fiscal year 2023 customer billing data for our test year analysis. This is pretty consistent that we would use, pick one year, and we're going to use the billing information for that year. It was approximately about 4 million lines of data in total that we had to analyze, and we developed these flow frequencies for every single rate code and customer class that you have. And then we said, what are some of our primary goals? The first one is to recover the actual cost of providing water and wastewater service on an individual basis. How much should water pay for? How much should wastewater pay for? We wanted to remove those minimum use provisions. You know, we want to charge for every gallon that we sell, and this will provide a more of a rational nexus between the demands of our customers and what the charges are to those customers. We want to remove the administrative burden that is, right now, we think may be associated with the switch to the winter rates for wastewater, and we want to recover our wholesale water cost from the customers that are benefiting from that service being provided. Next, we want to incentivize our customers to stay within our existing allotment of capacity from OKC. That's about 2 million gallons a day. When we recognized an allotment for your existing wells, and we spread that over all of our accounts, we came up with a level of service, and really, we're going to link this back to our first year, of about 8,000 gallons per month, and that would be on a per-account basis. Now, once you go above 8,000 gallons, you're starting to use water where you would have to purchase it at that much higher rate. It's actually 185% above our typical OKC cost. Then we wanted to reduce the average revenue collection delta amongst the customer classes, and we'll talk about that one a little bit more in detail in just a second. And we wanted to maintain the affordability of the city's existing rates. The first step when we design rates is we have to come up with a revenue target for each revenue stream on an individual basis. So what we've done is we've gone through all of our identified revenue requirements and allocated them in between water and wastewater service based on the nature of the expense and what is it benefiting, right? Is it meter reading, and that should be split on, based on the number of accounts? Wholesale water goes directly to water and whatnot. The results of this analysis is, they're pretty consistent with what you would see in most utilities, that, you know, water's kind of holding its own, and wastewater's generally maybe lagging a little behind. And so as you can see, the red bars, that really represents our wastewater revenue requirements on top that were identified, $4.5 million, and then our existing wastewater revenues, $2.9 million. So that kind of told us, hey, we need to do a couple things. We need to balance where our revenues are coming from, water versus wastewater, and we also need to develop a rate plan that meets our needs over the next five years. And the results of our analysis, this is shown on screen, these are our proposed rates. Now, a couple things to mention here. The base charges, both for residential and commercial, they would no longer include the minimum use provisions, and now it would be a strict adjusted base charge, and then we would bill for all consumption that's rendered on a monthly basis. The first tier, we've set at 0 to 8,000 gallons, and that really links to your existing system capacity. And so when we talk about how much can we give to each household based on what we have reserved in OKC, that's about that 8,000 gallons a month. Above 8,000 gallons a month, we're recommending to set it equal to our cost that we incur above Oklahoma City, or $7.85 per thousand gallons. Now, this would fully recover our needs on the water end and would match the cost that we're incurring to provide service on the water side. On the wastewater side, we also removed the minimum. One thing to note that we did a little different is, we did recognize a high-strength surcharge on commercial waste streams. And generally, if you think about a residential household, you have a lot of water that's going through the washing machine, you know, the dishwasher, whatnot, lower strength and how much, and really what that links to is, is what's the treatment requirement placed on your facilities, your treatment facilities? Where if you think about a Starbucks, you know, Starbucks is basically pouring milk, which has very, very high strength down the drain, and so most commercial customers do have much higher strength waste when compared to residential. So recognizing that, we did add a high-strength surcharge to the wastewater volumetric tiers. Okay, oh, gosh, okay. And now, a comparison of how are these proposed rates going to affect our customers? Our residential class, well, and one thing to mention here is that we are projecting that these rates will recover approximately 12% additional revenue for fiscal year 2025. However, where that revenue is going to come from and how it's going to impact our customers, residential will see about an 8% overall average increase, and commercial will see a approximately 25% average annual increase. Now, your existing, and then the bars on the bottom end of the screen, those really represent the average revenue collected for, based on our existing rates and our proposed rates for both the residential and the commercial class, commercial being in red. And if you note on like the first one, all the way to the left, that's really, you can see there's a big difference there between what that average revenue that's being collected from residential's paying almost $9.30 and commercial paying a little over $6. And under our proposed structure, those two come very close together. So the customers will be paying an average, a reasonably linked average cost, even though their demand requirements may be a little different. Then we prepared a bill comparison to your other neighboring utilities. Now, a couple things to note, right now, you're slightly below the average for a residential customer using 5,000 gallons a month at $64, and above, going to 2025, we would see, be slightly above the average. However, there's many of these utilities that would also be adjusting rates, and then, Cole, you did mention Norman?
That's right, yeah. One item to point out here, you can see on the far left, Norman, Oklahoma City, right down the road, they're pulling this average down. They are a special case where they actually have to go to a vote of the people to adjust their rates in any manner. So they have tried many times to adjust their rates without success, so just wanted to point that out, that Norman and several other utilities likely would be higher than this ever, in the average cost per thousand, if they had the ability to do so. So just wanted to point that out, that we think these proposed rates are still landing Yukon in a very reasonable, very affordable middle range as compared to the rest of the metro.
Are any of those cities that are in between Yukon existing and Yukon proposal, are any of those cities looking at rate changes, do you know?
So I can't speak, I can't speak to most of those cities, but like Ryan mentioned, Oklahoma City, they have already locked in rate increases that will happen annually. So OKC has voiced, at least to my knowledge, they have voiced publicly that they do not expect that to stop. They expect that cost to increase essentially annually until, you know, something drastic changes, so.
So the next thing I want to talk about that we were tasked to do was to look at developing a development or an impact fee, and really, this is a cost recovery mechanism. It's there to really recover the embedded cost of capital from a potential new customer. Right now, the system has, you know, what we included in the analysis was about $17 million of fixed assets, and that is in compliance with Oklahoma State statutes. And we also included the capital improvement plan that was associated with capacity, specifically the wastewater treatment plan upgrade project. And this fee is really there just to reimburse our existing customers for the cost that they've incurred to provide that capacity for future growth. So this is really allowing for growth to pay for growth. And the next slide shows the proposed impact fee or development fee calculation, and you can see all of our costs were bifurcated in between water and wastewater service. We've recognized your existing system capacity, both on the wells and the treatment costs, to come up with a cost per thousand gallon, or per gallon that was then applied to our level of service. Right now, we're recommending a fee of $610 per ERC for water and $1,530 for wastewater. We're going to jump, so now we're going to talk about the sanitation system, but the same exact analysis that we did for water and sewer, we mimic that same exact process for sanitation. Now sanitation, they have very similar costs, however, one thing to note is that our largest cost really internally is associated with waste stream collection, or refuse collection. You know, you collect from a residential household, you collect two 95-gallon carts four times a month, so that's a pretty significant amount of waste that's collected on an annual basis. We did look at certain parts of the city that's associated with, excuse me, the city does benefit from low disposal costs, so your cost at the landfill is very, very low right now, so it's not a huge, huge So your cost at the landfill is very, very low right now, so it's not a huge, huge impact on the system. One of the things we did recognize is, and we're making a recommendation about, is the adoption of a vehicle replacement plan. Basically, a dedicated budgeting mechanism to set aside monies to replace those vehicles, which can be very expensive, you know, $300,000 to $600,000 in that range. Um, and we've held the general fund transfers outside of the sanitation fund flat for the remainder of the forecast period. But the biggest thing to note is, you'll note in 2025, we're seeing that need for increases in revenues of approximately 20% and then 5.5% thereafter. Now, a couple of things to note about your existing retail rates. You really have two single-family residential rates, 0 to 3,000 gallons pays $5.46 a month, above 3,000 gallons pays $1,879. And one of the things that we noticed is really when we looked at what could be a potential discount for reduced service, since our disposal costs are so low, we really noted that the potential for a discount would be less than 5%. You know, I think we were right around four and a half. However, and, and honestly, when we look at $5.46 a month, when we amortized two 95 gallon carts, which cost about, you know, $75 to $100 apiece, that alone makes up about $2.50 of that $5 rate. So basically, you're getting $3 to collect eight 95 gallon carts a month. So it's, it's, there's a very big difference there. So that's one of the things we're going to work to get rid of. And then we did the same analysis on the commercial rates as well. Commercial does pay a reduced cost for a second dumpster. However, when we looked at the actual cost of collection, now, these are specific vehicles, front-end loaders that pick up this waste stream, we didn't note a real need for, or a rational nexus to provide a discount for additional dumpsters that's, you know, allowed to each customer. And to look at the revenue collected versus the equivalent collection units, that's what you're seeing on screen here now. And you can see that really the one that's making the, the biggest impact is right in the middle, the residential customers above 3,000 gallons, they make up about 56% of all of your bills rendered, but the cost associated with providing service to them is only 35% of the total cost. And so going forward, we did want to rebalance these revenue streams with their implied cost. And so we are making a recommendation to remove the additional cart discounts for commercial service. And then for single-family residential service, we're making a recommendation to go to a single rate for all users. Now, we're, this recommendation is actually about $2.22 below your current rate, so this is actually a reduction to our residential customers. Um, and when we talk about the average increase associated with water and sewer, you know, which was about 8% on the residential class, when we recognize this potential reduction on the sanitation rates, the average residential customer, the impact to their actual bill is only going to be about 3.5%. So we thought this was a really big, big win, um, overall. And how do you guys compare? You're right in the middle of the pack for sanitation rates, uh, with your existing rates, and then we look, we look to be declining for fiscal year 25. So we will be below the average by about a dollar 50, and this does compare fiscal year 25 rates for the city to fiscal year 24 rates for all of our other neighboring utilities. So we believe that competitiveness is going to continue on.
Does that include their recycling rate?
The other cities?
Uh huh.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, it doesn't.
It's separate.
It, it, you know, sanitation rates are kind of all over the place on what they include and what they don't include. So we typically just look at just refuse collection. And conclusions and recommendations. Our recommendation is to adopt the proposed rate structure for fiscal year 25. This provides a clear rational nexus in between the charges for water versus wastewater service and the services that are being received. It does remove the minimum gallons provisions, and it provides equitable cost recovery amongst our customer classes, residential versus commercial. And the average annual, the average combined increase for residential service is approximately 3.5%, so a real big win there. We are also recommending a rate indexing policy, so that's going forward beyond fiscal year 2025, to annually adjust our rates for inflation and known cost increases, specifically Oklahoma City, right? They're going up 5.5%. That's our largest cost. Right now, we're recommending, and we've provided some language for your consideration of inflation plus 2.5%, never to go above 5.5%. So that would be the max, and each year's calculation you would redo based on that provision. We are recommending to adopt the water and wastewater impact or development fees, and this is another cost recovery mechanism that can provide you some benefit and funds available for capital reinvestment in the future. And one thing to note again is that we did include a assumption associated with the city securing an SRF loan to fund the remainder of the wastewater treatment plan project. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions? You know, I'm a pretty black and white person, and so I would like to see what an average person with 3,000 gallons, 10,000, and 15,000, what their bill is going to look like compared to how it is and what it would be like. I want to see black and white paper.
I, I, I have those, actually. I can show it to you right now. Uh-oh, how do I get these ones?
Is it a hidden slide?
Yep, it is.
So what slide is that? Slide 27.
Can you just unhide them all?
Okay.
So this is the total impact from the water and wastewater rate adjustments. Um, and you can see that basically we've recalculated the bill at each thousand gallon increment. And you're absolutely right, Mayor, to, to, to look at that, you know, because when we do rate structure changes, you're going to have winners and losers. Um, but one thing to note here, beyond the 4,000 gallon a month guy, and that's really where they were receiving the lowest average cost for wastewater service, $2.50 per thousand for wastewater treatment, which is extremely low, that's where you're seeing kind of the largest impact right there.
I want to meet those people that can keep theirs at 2,000.
Gosh, I know, trust me.
I don't know how.
Can I, can I show you one more thing too?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, did they not all? Looking for 26.
And I'll just add, we were, obviously, we'll send these slides out if you haven't received them already.
We have, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure you had that.
I just didn't have it in front of me to see black and white.
You know, one thing we, I always try to do is like, just look at affordability, whether we're going to consider it in the, you know, in the actual calculation or not, but there's really two main metrics that people kind of consider when they talk about, are our rates affordable? Generally, they look at, the EPA publishes an affordability threshold, they've set it at 2.5%, so of median household income. And that's that yellow line up top, and you can see your existing rates are very, you know, a little bit above half of that, so your rates are still very, very affordable. And then the other thing we looked at is Fitch Ratings, which is kind of one of the national, you know, worldwide rating agencies. They also publish metrics or medians for the water and sewer industry. And they publish this, a similar median, now, it's on 7,500 gallons a month, so it does look at a little bit higher bill than what your average customers are using. But their average or median for a double A rated credit utility is approximately 1.8%. So when we looked at those two, we kind of said, hey, you know, the rates really do still look very affordable. Honestly, you guys are, I'm shocked that your rates are this low and you've been able to keep them this low, um, for so long. It just kind of shows the efficiencies that you've been able to do.
Well, you're right, I mean, for some people, it's a $3 increase, but for people like me, it's a $23 a month increase, yeah. Anybody else have any questions?
Where?
I, we use a lot of water at our house.
Oh. You're the 14,000?
Yeah, I'm the 14,000.
You know, trust me.
Nice grid lawn.
No, I got a pool. But, I mean, I don't know how people do it. I mean, we do laundry and only have three people in our household, but I guess we take a lot of baths.
Do you irrigate?
No.
Really? That's, that's, yeah. I'm, I'm serious, because like...
I mean, it's always been like that.
My kids leave the hose running constantly, and my bill, this was the highest it's been, was like 12,000 gallons a month, but honestly...
We're in a swimming pool.
Yeah, my, my water bill this last month was $185 for 12,000 gallons.
So 8,000 gallons per month is roughly 250 gallons per day?
Yep.
So DEQ has utilities paying for at least 100 gallons per day. So we're, we're trying to keep this to a reasonable, you know, residential area that wants to irrigate and do all the normal things, so.
All right, anybody have any questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, very interesting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your work. All right, when this meeting was initially called as a special meeting, it was due to the fact that we had an executive session because we had, um, we needed some possible action that needed to be done. So we thought, while we're having this meeting, let's go ahead and do the rate study, and we also needed to say goodbye to David. So we have these people lined up and ready to come, and then in the last minute, Todd Court changed the executive session because we, he was not prepared for us to make that action. So our executive session has been canceled. It was too late to cancel you guys at the last moment, and David will be leaving us. And so, and I apologize for that, these were things that were not foreseen. So with that in consideration, we're removing items two, three, 3A, four, five, and six, because items two, three, 3A, and four have some more work that they need to be done on before we can have it up for discussion. So again, uh, the court case was the main reason we were meeting tonight, and then we added in the proposal. So we will go to item number seven. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Before we adjourn, I'd like to again say thank you to David for stepping in at a time when we needed you, and we wish you the best of luck. This meeting is adjourned.
Well, you took a motion, so it wouldn't hurt.
Okay, let's vote. Jeff, please don't say no. Don't vote for adjournment.
Do it.
Does it have to be unanimous?
Let's vote.
Selby?
Yes.
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Inmark?
Yes.
All right, now this meeting is adjourned.